Good evening and welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Arlington Select Board. As a preliminary matter, this is Douglas Heim, Town Council to the town of Arlington. I serve as Chair pro temp until a new Chair of the Select Board is chosen. This meeting is also the Select Board's organizational meeting following the town election. So first, let me confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes.
Joe Kuro?
Yes.
John Heard?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chaplaine, Town Manager?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Arlington Select Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not require ensuring public participation unless there is a public hearing item on the agenda or other provision for public comment such as citizens' open forum. This meeting will feature opportunities for public comment on some agenda items as well as an open forum for resident comments. The Select Board is convening this meeting by Zoom as posted on the town website, which identifies how the public may join. The public may join this meeting either through the Zoom app or using the telephone dial-in number. It is also being broadcast live on ACMI. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that anything broadcasted may be captured on the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it's helpful for participants to see your first, full, and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. Finally, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Novus Agenda dashboard and the Board's webpage. We recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless the Chair notes otherwise. We're about to turn to the first item on the agenda, which is the organizational selection of a Board Chair and Vice Chair. But before we do that, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of the Board's business and to ensure, again, accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called, which is helpful for those persons who are attending the meeting by telephone. Further, please remember to try to mute yourself on your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please also remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate an accurate record. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Again, this meeting will feature opportunities for public comment on certain agenda items as well as a citizens' open forum. For comments on items, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment opportunities as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to raise their hand on the Zoom app. For persons attending by telephone, please note that you can raise your hand during public comment periods by pressing star nine. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the Chair before speaking. If a person is participating by phone, you should identify your name and address for the record when called upon. For citizens' open forum, citizens' open forum will function much the same way. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak on citizens' open forum to raise their hands. Again, folks by telephone can raise their hands by pressing star nine. Once the Chair has a list of persons wishing to speak, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes per speaker. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the Chair and that the Board ordinarily does not engage in colloquy in citizens' open forum because such items are not on the agenda for discussion under the open meeting law. Finally, permit me, as the Town Council, to enter a few words about our proceedings tonight in light of the town election. It's my understanding that the race for Select Board seats was significantly competitive and that the margin between two candidates was less than 100 votes. This Board's tradition has been to hold its organizational meeting on the Monday immediately following to the election and proceed with declared winners. It may be that recount petitions are entered. If those recount petitions change the outcome, the composition of the Board could change. However, to the extent that votes are taken, unless those votes are by close margins, those votes will stand, and it will be up to the Board to retake any votes they deem appropriate should the composition of the Board change. With all that, I now will call for nominations for the Select Board's Chair in the 2020 season. Ms. Mahan?
I'd like to nominate Mr. John Heard for Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
I see Mr. Kuro entered a second. With that, I'll take, I'm sorry, I apologize, I should have done this. I need to take a vote first to open nominations for the Chair, I apologize. Is there a motion to open nominations for the Chair?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kuro. Ms. Mahan, seconded. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
That's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Nominations for Select Board Chair are now open. Now with nominations open, Ms. Mahan, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. John Heard as Select Board Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations which members of the Board wish to enter? Are there any other comments?
I think we now, we entertain a motion to close the nominations.
I will. If there are no further comments, Ms. Mahan has made a motion to close the nominations.
Second.
Second. Mr. Kuro, thank you. On a motion to close the nominations and a second by Mr. Kuro, if there's no further discussion, I'll put it for a roll call vote. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins? Unanimous vote, and I do so declare it. Now, on the, with the nomination for Mr. Heard to proceed as Chair of the Select Board, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, and I do so declare it. Mr. Heard is elected as Chair of the Select Board. Congratulations, Mr. Heard.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Before I pass the gavel to you, which will be a relief to everybody, I'll, I'll open up nominations, I'll ask for a motion to open nominations for Vice Chair.
So moved.
Ms. Mahan has moved to open nominations for Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heard. I'll take a roll call vote if there's no further discussion. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey? Mr. DeCoursey?
He's frozen.
Mr. Diggins? Mr. DeCoursey and now Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Okay. It's a unanimous vote, I do so declare it. Nominations are now open for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair? I see Ms. Mahan, Ms. Mahan?
I'd like to make a motion to name Mr. Joseph Kuro as Vice Chair of the Arlington Select Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on, are there any other nominations the Board wishes to make? Then I'll take a motion to close nominations.
I'd like to make a motion to close the nominations for Vice Chair.
Ms. Mahan has moved to close nominations for Vice Chair, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. Roll call vote unless there's any points for further discussion. Seeing none, Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Nominations for Vice Chair are now closed. Thanks, everybody, for bearing with us here. Nominations now being closed, I'll take a roll call vote on the nomination of Mr. Kuro as the Vice Chair. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, and I do so declare it. Congratulations, Mr. Kuro, you're the Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
With that, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Heard, who is now the Chair of the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Heim, and thank you to my fellow Board members for bestowing this great honor upon me. I am up to the task. There's a lot of issues currently facing the town, and it's going to take a lot of work both between members of the Board, Town Staff, and residents to move our town forward. And, you know, I hope to be able to help in doing so. And I just want to congratulate Diane and Len on being elected and then also just say thank you to Makai Hailey, who was the third candidate for running a really clean and positive campaign. And, you know, I hope, I know she'll, we'll have a lot of interactions with her going forward. So the first me, the first agenda item that we have is a proclamation to declare June as LGBTQIA Pride Month in Arlington. So before I read the proclamation, I'm going to invite Julia Forsyth and Andy Rubinson from the, from the LGBTQIA Commission, the Rainbow Commission, to invite and to join us. One, do we have, Julia, are you there as well? Let me see.
Yes, in here, sorry.
Okay, great.
She had her video settings as usual.
No worries. All right, so I'm just going to pull up the proclamation. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas June marks LGBTQIA Pride Month and this year commemorates 50 years of pride in Massachusetts. The first pride began as a riot at the Stonewall Inn in 1969. It was led by people of color who sought an end to brutality and oppression of the LGBTQIA plus community by the New York Police. Fifty-one years later, we recognize and stand in solidarity with communities of color, particularly Black, Latin, Latino, and Indigenous people who continue to suffer constant injustice. We continue to work toward uniting against oppression, police brutality, racism, transphobia, and many other disparities that disproportionately impact these communities. Whereas pride is about challenging authority and embracing solidarity, and now this is more important than ever as people of all races, ethnicities, genders, orientations, and abilities continue to work on many fronts to realize this. Efforts to create a better world through acts of resistance to the inequality, inequitable enforcement of unjust laws, and local, state, and federally sanctioned harassment and abuse of LGBTQIA plus people, Black people, Latino people, Asian people, Indigenous people, and women have continued since the second half of the 1960s. Fifty-one years later, we continue to do this work and to seek the same outcomes for all people. Whereas the continued COVID-19 pandemic is having disproportionate, a disproportionate impact on LGBTQIA plus communities and communities of color, which are already vulnerable to healthcare, employment, and housing discrimination. These communities continue to struggle with higher rates of homelessness, health, and food insecurities compared to other communities. They face additional simultaneous health issues stemming from bias, mental health, and lack of insurance compounded with high job losses and growing rates of positive COVID-19 cases. During COVID-19, we must continue to denounce racist and xenophobic overtones that have pervaded some conversations of the ongoing pandemic and its response while bringing awareness and assistance to disproportionately impacted communities. Whereas, town meeting created the LGBTQIA plus Rainbow Commission in 2017 to promote LGBTQIA plus affirming policies for all residents of the town of Arlington. And whereas, the town of Arlington was one of only 10 municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to earn a spot on the Human Rights Campaign's 2019 Municipal Equality Index and one of seven in the state to earn a perfect score. And whereas, the LGBTQIA plus Rainbow Commission is aware that in Massachusetts, LGBTQIA plus people of all ages are more likely to experience disparities in health in the social detriments of health as compared with their straight and cisgender peers and that these disparities are even greater among LGBTQIA plus people of color. And whereas, people, students in the town of Arlington who are homeless are disproportionately more likely to be LGBTQIA plus. In the town of Arlington's 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Assessment found that sexual minority youth, including lesbian, gay, and bisexual high school students in particular, are at substantial risk for serious health outcomes relative to their peers. And whereas, the LGBTQIA plus community in Arlington is resilient and enjoys strong allied partnerships with the town's Human Rights Commission, Counseling on Aging, Disability Commission, Commission for Arts and Culture, and numerous other groups and residents that support the LGBTQIA plus Rainbow Commission's work to bring greater visibility and empowerment to the LGBTQIA plus population through education, advocacy, and collaboration with other town agencies, schools, and community groups. And whereas, celebrating LGBTQIA plus Pride Month and displaying pride flags are outward representation of the town's commitment to full inclusion of the LGBTQIA plus community in Arlington civic life. And whereas, the LGBTQIA plus Pride Month celebrations and commemorations will take place virtually and online in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to adhere to public health physical distancing guidelines in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, giving even greater importance to outward representations of support for the LGBTQIA plus community in Arlington. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Select Board, reaffirm our support for equal protections for LGBTQIA plus residents of Arlington. Be it further resolved that we designate June 20th as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month in Arlington.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the proclamation as presented.
We have, second. Move approval by Mr. Kuro. Second by Ms. Mahan. And just want to invite if either Andy or Julia want to add anything at this time.
I just want to say thank you for everyone for reading the proclamation and for your continued support for the Commission. You know, it's definitely been a challenging year for everyone, and it's definitely been a challenging year for us as well. A lot of our pride planning has pretty much just gone right out the window like so many other things. So we had to make a lot of readjustments, and so we'll speak about all of those after, I think, we get through this vote. But again, thank you for your continued support.
And Andy, did you want to add anything?
Does someone have to unmute him? He's unmuted himself.
Okay.
Do you want, Mr. Chair, perhaps Mr. Rubinson wants to call in with his phone, and maybe you can get the audio that way?
Sure.
I may know nothing of what I'm talking about.
Ashley, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we got you.
Okay, all right. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Yes, I just wanted to second Julia's gratefulness gratitude for allowing us to celebrate our pride virtually and for supporting the proclamation, giving these challenging times.
Thank you. All right, so we first have a vote to approve the proclamation by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Ms. Mahan. Attorney Heim?
Maybe call on each Board member if any of us have any comments before we do that or no?
Sure.
No, no, let's do it, Mr. Heard.
First motion, I'll go down the line for any, each Board member's, for me. Ms. Mahan?
Should almost take me last, that's not fair. First, I want to thank Julia and Andy for all the work they're doing with LGBT, LGBTQIA plus Rainbow Commission work. And I think the acronym alone really speaks volumes because when we first came out, when we first started a group like this, it was only three letters. That's indicative of the inclusivity and welcoming that these past committee members and current have done. And I understand here that this is a request to put up banners down along Mass Ave as well as you have some events scheduled for July and August. I was wondering for people at home who may be listening by phone or be watching this later and not have the agenda, if you could just sort of, in a couple of sentences, either Ms. Forsyth or Mr. Rubinson, explain what the banners are going to look like. And I think you have a theme of what messages, and maybe the other person can just explain about what the July and August activities are anticipated to be.
So I can, I can ask Joe, who made the motion. I had that as two separate issues. I don't know if we need two separate motions for that.
I'm happy to amend my motion. I mean, I referenced the proclamation, but it's, there's a banner request on here as well.
As well as the banner request?
Yeah.
Okay, and Ms. Mahan, do you accept that as your second?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heard.
Sure. So I'll give you guys an opportunity now if you want to speak about the banners, the banner requests, as the first one was about the proclamation. So Julia, would you like to start?
Yes. So, I mean, traditionally what we've done is, you know, we've painted the crosswalk in front of Town Hall. We've displayed pride flags on Town Hall. Those are challenging to do this here. And so Andy and, I believe, is the Human Rights Commission came up with the idea to solicit funds and display banners, basically going to be pride banners up along Mass Ave. And I'm going to let Andy speak a little bit more on those since he's been a bit more involved with those.
Yeah, so I'll also thank Christine Carney and the Human Rights Commission, who did the banners for Black History Month, that kind of spurred us on to doing this. Oh, great, thank you, Adam, for sharing. So these are the actual banners here. You'll see, these will be double-sided with a Happy Pride on the left, and on the back of that will be the Rainbow Commission logo. And so the, when you look at it from the other side, you'll see the same thing. Happy Pride on the left and the Rainbow Commission logo on the right. We have raised funds to produce eight banners, which will be four polls, street polls, going on either side of Pleasant along Mass Ave.
Okay, great. Okay, now I will recognize Board members. Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, just thank you very much for the work on this, and the banners look beautiful. I really look forward to seeing them up there, you know, in addition to celebrating. My husband, Rob Davidson, was the designer, so I have to give him credit. Excellent, excellent. Thank you to Rob. Yeah, I mean, and not only do they celebrate pride, but they're going to look beautiful and that as the sunshine is coming too, and we all need a bit of that. You know, one thing I've been very proud of in our town is the MEI rating. It's always been high, but ever since we pulled together LGBTQIA plus Rainbow Commission, we've seen that number go up and up every year. And really, that's, that's a tribute to a lot of work that's been done by the Town Manager and his staff, but really by the Commission as well. And I know that you all helped to coordinate those responses and, and help to brainstorm about ways that we can address some of the gaps that still, still exist in certain service to the LGBTQIA plus community here in Arlington. So I just want to thank you very much for that. Thank you for bringing this back. I mean, I miss being in our chamber because usually during the month of June, we have the large rainbow flag on the, you know, above one of the entryways going into the chamber. So we'll look forward to that next year, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank Julia and Andy for your work on the Commission and for working around some of the challenges this month with the banners in light of the COVID crisis. So thank you both very much.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes, me, I'm totally in support of this, of course. I just have a few questions and a couple of comments, maybe. So who designed the logo? It's a fabulous logo.
Andy?
So actually, this predates me. I don't know if Julia, you know, I know Mel Goldside, the former Chair, had a relationship with the designer who did it, but I don't know.
It's great.
We began soliciting designs last year, and Mel Goldside, the previous Chair, she had a friend, they live in California, and they collaborated with us to design this logo. And it was, it's a response to be as inclusive as possible. You can see the number of different orientations and gender flags as we could fit in a logo, so it's.
Yes, nicely done. Nicely done. My partner actually was part of one of the main bisexual groups, and he designed their logo back in the day, you know, thirty years ago. So, so, so a few questions. So you said you weren't able to do the sidewalk? I know how much Mel enjoyed the sidewalk, you know, what was the issue with that? I'm not sorry, I'm not sorry, I said sidewalk, I meant crosswalks.
The crosswalk, we were just concerned about, again, maintaining social distancing. It usually takes about four to six people plus two to three police escorts to paint the sidewalk. We just didn't feel like it would be feasible this year.
Got you, okay. And could you tell people, because I think a lot of people don't know what the QIA plus stands for? Just for educational purpose, just tell us what that is.
The Q is queer. There's a number of people in the community that are reclaiming the term queer.
So I actually thought it was questioning.
Questioning as well. I mean, it stands for multiple things. I as intersex, so those individuals that are born with ambiguous genitalia and they're assigned a certain gender at birth that doesn't match with their gender identity.
Right.
And the A is asexual or, you know, a number of things. And then we just add the plus to continue to expand the letters.
Yes, great, great. I think, I mean, a suggestion, maybe not for modifying this proclamation, but in a future one, just initially when you designate those letters, just spell out what they're for. Because for those of us in the community, we have a guise to deal with the R. Because for those of us in the community, we have a guise to deal with the R. But it'd be nice to just kind of let everyone else know what they stand for. And I'm a big fan of the plus. I have my identity and I'm not into identity politics, per se. And so I didn't really campaign on the notion of my sexual orientation. But I do remember when the flag was first me, just LGB, and it was important to start adding all those other letters. And I very much support the plus because as we know, there are lots of different kinds of people and lots of different relationships. And as happy as I am for gay marriage, you know, with both my partner and I being technically bisexual, we don't really claim that a whole lot because a lot of people think me bisexual as you're kind of like half gay. Well, you're half and half. I mean, not so much half gay, half straight, but that you have any kind of equal kinds of partners. And also, my first relationship was, was with a couple, a male female couple. And it would have been great for us to have been able to form something legally binding amongst the three of us. But that wasn't possible. It still isn't possible. But it is great that we've made that step, that we have gay marriage. And so the plus, I think, lets us know that we do have more, more work to do. And one of the great things I have felt about pride is, is that I'd like to see it eventually emerge, evolve into this kind of appreciation for the range, I mean, the rainbow range of human sexualities. And so that I love for us at some point to be out in June, just celebrating being human sexual creatures that just appreciate each other for what we are. So that's my little proclamation myself. A couple more questions. So the Latin X, I noticed that in the proclamation, was that, is that technical? Is that like a designation?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
I saw in the proclamation that it was Latin X. So.
Latino, Latino.
Okay, so that's just a lot for multiple versions of Latin. Okay, I appreciate that. And and one more thing, I can read my own writing here. No, I, oh, oh, I know what it is. So you mentioned the COVID-19 effect on the on the community. And if possible, at some point, if you could give us a link, I mean, to the data behind that, because I think it would be important to back that up with some numbers as to how the community has been disproportionately affected by COVID. Great, thank you.
I know the Human Rights Campaign has published something on it. I'm sure there are other sources as well.
Yeah, it's great. Because I mean, you have the links to other things that are very good. And so I love it when these proclamations actually provide people with the links to the information, because I'd like for these things to be a repository of information that people can go to. Because especially if I'm going to be involved, I will be thinking about these meetings a lot. And then when I bring up these to people, I can say, hey, go to the select boards page and you'll find information there. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Then Ms. Mahan, did you have anything to add beyond your initial comment? Okay.
No, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just like to follow up with what everyone had just said. This committee is so important to the town. It does so much work. And year after year, the Rainbow Coalition is just, it, it, it's very present of all the committees. It's a lot, it does, we see a lot from the Rainbow Commission. It's a lot of work, which we understand and we thank you for. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Carl, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, for, to approve the proclamation to declare June as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month in Arlington, as well as to approve the request for pride banners on Mass Ave. Attorney Heim?
Mr., I'm sorry, we've got to recalibrate where I'm starting from. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
To Kuro?
Yes.
To Hurd?
Yes. Thank you.
An unanimous vote, I do so declare.
Thank you. And thank you, Julia and Andy, for participating.
Thank you for your support.
All right. So the next agenda is, item is, agenda item number four, it's our consent agenda. It's approval of new election workers. We have Jennifer Caruso of 11 West Moreland Ave, Susan Caruso, 11 West Moreland Ave, Joseph Cook of 13 Egerton Road, Caroline Harrington of 74 Columbia Road, and Bernadette Murphy of 60 Pleasant Street. First, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
And a, do you have a second?
Second.
All right. So on a motion by Mr. Carl, seconded by Ms. Mahan, Attorney Heim?
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to get it right. Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
An unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next agenda item, number five, we have for approval and all alcohol package store license for Easy Convenience. Presh Patel, owner, 935 Massachusetts Avenue. Do we have Attorney Wood Stanley here, O'Connor? Hi, Attorney Stanley O'Connor. Do you want to just tell us a little bit about the, the request?
Certainly. This is a request by EPW LLC, which many of you may know was the Meat House located at 1398 Massachusetts Avenue. Transfer the license to 3P Corporation, which is, as many of you know, Easy Convenience, which is located at the corner of Grove and Massachusetts Avenue. This, I'm representing actually both of them. They've waived the conflict and I'm representing both parties in this transaction. You have all of the documents. And I just want to address a couple of things. I understand that the Board of Selectmen would like to space out the licenses, and this was a license that was located in the Heights. The reality is, Prime was forced to go out of business because of the rent structure in the Heights, in that shopping center where Panera Food used to be. There are very few areas in the Heights with sufficient, with any parking that could accommodate this. Swifty Printing is now having a different business go in there. And the only other real parking alternative is Dagostino's that has a parking up there. I have provided to you a number of letters and a petition that have been signed by customers of Easy Convenience. Now, Easy Convenience, these gentlemen have owned the store for over 20 years. Some of you probably have gone in there and been customers, but they have a very loyal customer base. And the standard for transfer of a liquor license or for grant of a liquor license is public convenience or public need. And this is why I have provided you with those letters and those petitions. Because if you look at the petitions in the letters, you will see that they span the entire town of Arlington, from East Arlington to the Heights. You have a wide variety of customers that shop there. This is not going to be a full-service liquor store with five different kinds of bourbons. This is going to be more in the nature of what the Meat House was, which was a convenience for shoppers who were there. And we would suggest to you that the transfer is appropriate. You know, from the last license that was made available, that there was only one applicant that applied for it. And I would suggest to you that it's a positive for that store. These gentlemen, you see the reports from the town. They have had no violations in their store. They are probably two of the friendliest store owners that I've ever met. They know all their customers by name. I was amazed when I went in there one time, two or three years ago, and they said hello to me and recognized me and I hadn't even met them. But they treat everyone like that. And you know, the age of the corner store is a dying breed. And part of it is because of costs. The governor has just passed a law that convenience stores and all stores in Massachusetts can no longer sell menthol-flavored cigarettes. That is going to be a significant decline in their business. So I would suggest to you that, based on public and I will also tell you that the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission has issued rulings that say that the mere fact that another store may be in the vicinity is not a basis to deny the transfer or the grant of a liquor license. So I would suggest that they're good candidates for the license. They're hardworking businessmen that have been in the community for a very long time, and their customer base believe it's a convenience for them. And I believe that Mr. Weissman, who is the principal of EPW, the prospective transferor, and Presh Patel, who is the president of the prospective transfer, are both on the call, so they can answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll open up to the board for any questions. Ms. Mahan?
Initially, when this came before this board, this discussions around this, not the actual application. It was the pre-pandemic and coronavirus time. And so if you would ask me back then, I would have said that we need to follow along process, nullify the transfer, then start the process all over again, and go that way. But in light of, you know, the current circumstances that we're in, I do know Mr. Patel, he knows my name, he knows my dad's name. And when I have to buy my parents' scratch tickets, which I don't believe in, for their birthdays or anniversaries, he knows what they like. And one of the other things that he does, similar to my days since Minimark, you know, I've been in there when someone walks through the door, you know, he knows him or her by name. They're short some money or they don't have any money and they say, anyway, and get a few things and I'll pay you, I promise, at the end of the week. And he's been known to do that. He doesn't really advertise that about himself. So I've been here 20 years in the community. So I think in light of the current times, in light of, I like to say, businesses and people have to adapt. The governor likes to say pivot. And in light of the fact that the industry standard in Arlington, when these convenience store owners were going before the Board of Health regarding eliminating all menthol substances, is about 30% of their business. So they've lost that. They've lost what they've lost perhaps to the coronavirus. But they have become essential workers. And I think I would like to, I would like to make a motion to approve this license so that we can, you know, keep this gentleman and his family, a family-run business, able to be open, sustainable, announced, and more importantly, available to the general public. So I'd like to move approval.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Mr. DeCoursey. Mr. DeCoursey, any, do you have any questions for the applicant or comments?
Yeah, just a quick question. Thank you for the thorough application and the, the list of supporters is very impressive. I'm just wondering, and I've been in this store several times, but what is in the alcohol area now? Or what will become the alcohol area if the, if the transfer is approved?
Presh, can you answer that?
So it'd be more closer to the counter where the coffee counter is right now and the corner behind the counter. So that'd basically be the alcohol area. And we're going to move the coffee toward the window side so that we could be more closer to the, where we stand and we can keep an eye on, things like that.
Okay, all right. And I do see on the plan that you submitted, there is a line, no kids beyond the line. And then it looks like the, there's a cooler that's going to be shared between just what you're selling now and perhaps for alcoholic beverages. Is there a line down at that end, too, down the firewall, just for separation purposes? Or what are you proposing to do down over there just for separating the alcohol sales from the general, general merchandise?
There is no plan to block that right now. But if that's most comfortable for you guys, it's okay to, you know, we can put some kind of a mini glass or fiberglass, something. But we were going to put it on, but then it's hard to move the product around and have the drug delivery and all that services. That's why we kind of, you know, we open for that if that's what's comfortable for you.
Yeah, actually, just a question. I didn't see any designation over there. So I just want a clarification. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Diggins, any questions for the applicant?
Excuse me. It's more just educational questions for myself. So what's the rationale behind spacing out the licenses? I shouldn't say the rationale. I kind of get the rationale. But what was the basis for it? Was it originally a zoning thing like we have with hot shops?
It wasn't zoning. We, when we originally had the licenses, I think, I believe there were three. And it was the board's desire at the time to put one in the center, one in East Arlington, and one in the Heights. And then the board added two more licenses. And there was another in the center, another in East Arlington. So we added a sixth license at town meeting a year or so back. And we opened that up last year. And we only had one applicant. So that license, when we put it out there, we had indicated that we wanted it to be a store in the Heights. So then we would have a balance of two in the Heights, two in the center, two in East Arlington. But Attorney Wood Stanley O'Connor mentioned, we only had one applicant at the time.
Right, got it.
If I could just add one more thing. Part of the problem that you have in the Heights, whether fortunately or unfortunately, is right across the line, you have Berman and Vines's. And those are big stores with lots of parking. So it's very hard to compete with them. Whereas in East Arlington, you don't have anything till you get to Norton's, which is much farther into North Cambridge. So it's been difficult. I've had clients that have looked in the Heights to put a liquor store and it's not, they don't think it's feasible, the rent structure, so the competition, so the two big stores.
Thanks for the information. I appreciate it.
Ms. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, Mr. Patel, through you, through you, Mr. Chair, it's nice to see you again. I think we met once, seven or eight years ago, I think, when we did have a go around, when we had added two licenses on. We did not have sufficient licenses for all the applicants at that point. So I'm glad to see that the situation is a little bit different now, that we don't have that imbalance. Also, I was quite impressed with the devotion of your clientele and the letters of recommendation that were included in the packet. I don't really have any other questions, other than I will say that my question was going to be the exact same one as Mr. DeCoursey's. I noticed the no kids beyond this control for the alcohol area. And I had had actually that same question as to whether there was any kind of control on the, on the other end of that area. You know, I don't think we have it as a condition in the license. But if you ask me frankly, I mean, yeah, I feel more comfortable if there was some kind of a petition back there to prevent kids from end running. By kids, I mean teens, you know.
Okay.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yep. And I support the application. It was probably a little out of our footprint that we were looking for on the last go around. But as we mentioned, there was only one application in the Heights. And it's just, it's becoming clear that it's just not feasible to sustain two stores up in the Heights. So with that, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Carl, seconded by, sorry. I didn't read it.
Motion by Mrs. Mahan.
Motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey.
This is Doug Heintown, Town Council. Can I interject something?
Sure.
This is a public hearing. So we should see whether or not there's any comment from the public in order to make sure that we're following the requirements for the license issuance.
Sure. I'll get this right. Second go around. And now we can invite any comments from the public. Are there any, I'll ask the town manager if there's any raised hands, anyone that would like to speak about this application?
I do not see any raised hands. No, no raised hands.
All righty. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Mr. Diggins has.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So, so I am. Sorry, sorry. So I am curious, is anyone going to give the Dan Dunn speech? And on this, or is this an appropriate place for giving that speech?
If you remember it.
Well, as I recall, it will optimize of the employees being trained, you know, to really do the proper checks for IDs. And as we recall, it's, we are sure initially when the license is given, but sometimes new employees come on and then that training isn't done, and they get in trouble. So he wanted to emphasize that there'd be a real firm or rigorous process for making sure that new employees are trained, so that when, well, when they come on board, they know how to properly check IDs. And so, so I think I'll stop channeling Mr. Dunn now and stop.
And that's the restaurant one, but that's okay.
Right, that's why I asked if it was appropriate in this one, so that's why I asked.
It's still appropriate. It's still appropriate.
Whatever you say is appropriate, you're a member of the board. I apologize.
Thank you.
Is that a question to the applicant? Mr. Diggins, or just a comment?
Well, well, we, well, it was more, and I want to say admonition, but it's just, it's something to be aware of, meaning, and so, you know, I'm sure the answer, if I ask the question, would be yes. So I'm not going to ask a question. I'm sure he's trained, and I'm sure he's planning on training people, but just emphasize that that's usually where the process breaks down, is when new employees come on. So he just wants, just wanted to alert him to that, so that he should prepare for it. Because we want people to not get in trouble. Thank you.
Attorney Hine?
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Your unanimous vote, I so declare.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, if I could, through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to, at this point, on behalf of all the members of the select board, I didn't want to do this at the beginning, congratulate our colleague, Mary Wynt Stanley O'Connor, on her very well-deserved campaign for Board of Assessors. And your really truly impressive victory. And I did actually catch a few, not my debate, but other debates. And there was times there where I feel some things went left. And I was impressed the way you maintain your decorum and professionalism. And thankfully, the voters of Arlington saw that too, so welcome back and congratulations.
Oh, can't hear you. To both of you.
Thank you.
All right, we now move on to Citizens Open Forum. In unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request to the board. And I'll look to the town manager to see if we have any raised hands for Citizens Open Forum.
We have two hands raised right now. We have Don Seltzer at Margie Bell, and someone who's identifying themselves as TDC Conference Five. So with the chair's approval, I'll bring Mr. Seltzer in as a panelist, and maybe we could also politely ask TDC Conference Five to change their name to a name if they're willing to.
Yep. That works.
All right, Don should be. Mr. Seltzer, are you with us?
Mr. Seltzer, you there?
Okay, am I, I think I'm unmuted now.
You are unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Don Seltzer, Irving Street. I wrote to the board late last week regarding the long-delayed sale of 1207 Massachusetts Avenue. It's an eight-year history intended primarily for the majority of the board, who has never been involved in any of the proceedings on this property. I won't go over the detail. I assume that you've received the correspondence by now.
Sure. I don't have it in front of me, but.
Okay. I'll just go over the key summary points. Number one is, the select board has never actually given its required approval to the purchase and sale. Back in 2017 was the last time you voted on it. And at that time, you authorized the town manager to enter into negotiations and then to return to the board for approval of the purchase and sale. And this step seems to have been overlooked. The purchase and sale promises exemption from building permit fees that are written into the town's bylaws. Only town meeting has the authority to override these fees. And this is a significant matter. On this development that's proposed, these permit fees will likely top $100,000. Back in 2015, when town meeting approved of the disposal of this property, it was based upon the promise of $1 million to pay for the Stratton School renovation. That was the expectation at that time of everybody, and unfortunately, it hasn't come to pass. And since thus, in the last five years, the town's needs and real estate values have changed considerably. The next point is, it simply doesn't look very good, the nature of the sale. Because back in 2012, when the select board first learned of the ownership of 1207 Mass Ave, a town official quickly moved in to buy the adjacent lot at 1211 Mass Ave. I'm not suggesting there's anything illegal or unethical about this, but it simply doesn't look good to the public. And the final closing of the sale has been delayed over and over again due to the buyer's failure to provide the required materials to the redevelopment board. It's going on a year now, and they have yet to provide some of the basic information that's required for an application for a special permit. And the terms of the sale allow either party to simply walk away from it as of this coming June 21st. So I suggest that it's appropriate for this new board to reconsider the whole matter and decide whether they do want to proceed with the sale or whether they want to revisit the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a second person?
Yes, so the next person is Margie Bell. Let me promote them to panelist. Okay.
Hi there, everyone.
Hi, Margie.
Yeah, it's actually Margie.
Margie.
No problem at all. So thank you for giving me some time, my first select board meeting. I'm joining you today really just as a concerned town citizen, concerned about the viability of all of our local businesses, and today, for today's purposes, in particular, our local restaurants. I know, you know, the community has rallied around takeout, but all of our restaurants have unquestionably lost a lot of revenue over the last few months. Summer is the best opportunity for them to recoup that revenue, but they need space, and in particular, outdoor space. So, and time is obviously of the essence. So my ask of the town, remove friction to getting this done. I was extremely pleased to see that there already is a draft temporary outdoor license regulation out there and proposed. I asked that the town minimize permitting hurdles and really fast-track approvals so that businesses can capitalize on the improving weather now. Enable experimentation. I'm a complete newbie to this, but I'm learning about concepts like tactical urbanism, where there's low-cost, temporary changes, and a lot of experimentation. And that's going to take the town being flexible and accommodating and pivoting, I think, as Mrs. Mahan said. Follow the lead of existing towns. We've seen Poughkeepsie closing, Main Street, Waltham has announced they're closing Moody's Street. We really need to enable outdoor space. On that note, so many restaurants will be unable to sport outdoor seating without the help of the town. They do not have the space, so we need to create space. We need to claim stretches of parking spots on Mass Avenue, like the Ride Cafe has done in Lexington. We need to perhaps close off Medford Street or the Broadway Street Plaza. Close off sections of the town parking lots. Offer restaurants space in front of the town hall or the gardens by the library. Encourage restaurants to work with their neighbors and get creative. I live in the Heights, and I could imagine enabling restaurants to negotiate parking lot use in the evenings. Maybe Arlington Col and Lumber would be open to that, or D'Agostino's in their off-hours. Of course, with the provisions of these businesses. We need to consider solutions and spaces that provide some permanence, both day and evening, weekends and weekdays. Weather can be unpredictable, and restaurants really need to capitalize on all of these good-weather days, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then finally, I think we need to think about how we enable this from the pure logistics of tables. I actually took some time to speak with Taylor Rentals. You know, they can, they can rent out tables and chairs, $50 a month. I'm sure that if the town helps to negotiate, we can enable the restaurants to get up and running quickly. We also have the experience of Town Day. A lot of these restaurants, I'm sure, will be scrambling to do this without further help. So I'm also thinking, you know, about how the town might subsidize, or potentially, we can crowdsource within the communities. But I think it's so important that we all collectively act, and we act quickly. So in closing, I just want to say, I hope the town will make this a priority. Our local businesses are so very important. They are the fabric of our community, and we really need to help them to both survive and thrive in these unprecedented times.
Thank you for your input. I know a lot of residents share your concerns, and some of the town is working on. If you wouldn't mind, since you do have a number of ideas, if you could put them in writing, email it either to the select board or to our email addresses, we can respond to you via email.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Do we have a third?
I can't hear you.
Still muted.
Sorry. The third is still identified as TDC Conference Five, so I will promote them to panelist. But if this is an attempted Zoom bomb, I will quickly remove them.
Okay.
Hi, it's not a Zoom bomb. I just can't figure out how to change the name. I really did try. My name is Farhad Jalalboy. This is my first town meeting, and I'm really coming to you as, as a resident that loves the town of Arlington, but we're living in a climate in this country where there's violence and racism against our Black community and our people of color. And so I come here really trying to understand what the town is doing. In addition to putting up a banner for Black Lives Matter, what systemic changes is the town thinking about proposing, and what are they going to do? There are a number of campaigns going around currently. There's the, I think, a campaign called Eight Can't Wait that has several policy recommendations. I can read them off to you. It's around banning chokeholds and strangleholds, requiring de-escalation, requiring warning before shooting, requires to exhaust all alternatives before shooting, duty, the duty to interfere, man-shooting, ban-shooting at moving vehicles, require the use of force continuum, and require comprehensive reporting. So those are some different policy initiatives. So I was wondering if you may be able to elaborate and deeply consider what kind of policy changes we can make to ensure that our community is safe for everyone.
So because of the rules of Citizen Open Forum, since it wasn't a posted agenda item, we can't respond to requests during Citizens Open Forum. But if you can take your request and, again, put them in writing, the best way to get to us is via email to the select board's office or the individual select board members, then we can respond to your email with any other questions and requests that you have.
And I can, and Mr. Heard, I will likely also be addressing some of the questions under the Black Lives Matter banner, banner, agenda item. So I know it seems overly procedural, but I will get to some of the points you made under that agenda item as well.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I could also, Mrs. Mahan, say, I'll have similar, I won't say the same thing as the town manager, but I just wanted, for people that are listening to this the first time, it's, it's not the duty to interfere, it's the duty to intervene. So I just want to make sure, but I'll be talking whatever the town manager doesn't touch upon or my colleagues. If there's anything left for me to say, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. And did you have any further comments?
No further comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And let me check one last time. Mr. Town Manager?
No, no other heads. Nope.
All right, and that closes Citizens Open Forum. Next up on the agenda, we have traffic rules and order and other business. Agenda item number six for approval, Arlington Preservation Fund Loan. We have Patrick Guthrie, President of the Arlington Preservation Fund.
I do not see him here, Mr. Chair. Unless he, unless he's BD MacBook Pro. It's the only, the only person that's not by name. Although he'd probably be raising his hand.
Sweet.
Doug, do you have any familiarity with this? This, I, I cannot speak to this matter in Pat's absence.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm not personally familiar with the, with the fund. If you want to circle back to it, I could take another quick review of the documents. When I move on to the next agenda item, I'd be happy to let you know if I feel comfortable presenting what vote should be before the board.
Okay. So we'll table that. I'll ask Attorney Hine, do we need a motion to table, or can we just move on to the next item?
I think if we're not, Mr. Chair, if we're not tabling to the next meeting, then we can move to the next agenda item, and then we can circle back.
So we'll put that back on the end of our traffic rules and order. Next agenda, agenda item is for discussion and vote. Waiver of certain interest in penalties on property tax bills pursuant to Section 11 of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. To our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. So this was a matter that I believe maybe every member of the board asked us to bring back on the agenda to give some reconsideration to. So as the board recalls, in the immediate or in the early days of COVID-19, legislation was passed allowing for the forgiveness of penalties and interest related to both water sewer charges as well as property tax, as well as the pushing back of due dates. At that time, the board did push back the due dates for water sewer and property tax bills, but only at our recommendation, only chose to waive the interest and penalties for the water and sewer bills and not the property tax, because we wanted to make sure, frankly, that mortgage companies that pay out of escrow didn't hold until the last day of June and thereby accrue the benefit and harming the town's cash flow. Now that we're past June 1, we can look at it analytically and see that just over 500 taxpayers out of over 15,000 have not yet paid for this quarter. And that, that amount totals to approximately $1.7 million. So we talked about this with the finance team, and the treasurer did want me to share her concern of equity that some people may have made hard decisions to pay on time. And, you know, without knowing that there was the possibility of the, of waived interest coming forward. But overall, after considering it, I know that the deputy town manager and myself both felt like this was a small, in the course of our budget, a small amount. And if there are people out there who could benefit from not having to pay interest, if they pay by the end of the month, if the board so chooses, it seems to be an appropriate and acceptable measure.
All right, thank you. And I'll open up the board for comments. Mr. De Corsi?
Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. I support waiving the interest on the real estate taxes to June 30, and I'm happy to see it back on the agenda. And we'll all recall, prior to Mr. We did raise this ability that, that we would revisit it. So I think given the number of people that, that could be I, I think it makes good sense to extend that deadline on interest through June 30th. And just remember, it's a waiver through June 30th that the payment is in bait. The waiver goes away. So it is allowing for some additional time, but the payment has to be made by the end of the month. So, so with that, Mr. Chair, move that we approve a waiver on real estate tax interest through June 30th.
Motion for approval by Mr. DeCoursey. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Curran. Mr. Curran, any comments?
No, I think that it's appropriate. I mean, the economy is starting to open up, but there are still people who are hurting. And I think we have just a little bit more latitude here that we, to provide some assistance to those who are struggling to make, make the payments. I think that we should use a tool that the state gave us.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
I agree completely. So yeah, I have nothing to add.
And Ms. Mahan?
I also join in supporting this and I appreciate the fact that my colleagues and the current chair and the town manager. Everything we got with the governor's executive order, chapter 53 and all acts related there too, that has sprung up as a result of COVID-19 that we committed to looking at everything, implementing what is feasible, but not completely closing the doors, Mr. DeCoursey said, and revisit another time because it may not be a tool two months ago, but it's something that is now. So I just want to applaud the chair and my colleagues and the town manager for having committed to that process and actually doing it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I support this as well. We're now at June 8th, so it's just a few weeks. And if we can help people get over the, over the edge, then we should do that. So on a motion by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Carl, Attorney Hahn.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. And that brings us to agenda, agenda item number eight for discussion endorsement, placement of Black Lives Matter banner on Town Hall. Mr. Chaplin, did you want to open this?
Yeah, sure. Would you like me to have the chairs of the Human Rights Commission as well as Jillian Harvey join us?
Sure, absolutely.
Let me, let me do that. I don't want to. I try to do too many things at the same time. It won't go well, so. Right. So they, they should be joining us. So thank you again, Mr. Chair. I just, I wanted to open by saying, well, we want, we want to do a few things. I think we want to talk about the Black Lives Matter banner and our associated efforts. And I think we want to talk about the proclamation that's been drafted by the Human Rights Commission for the board's consideration tonight. And I think part and parcel to that, we want to talk a little bit about how this is more than just putting a sign on Town Hall, but tied into the efforts that are already underway and yet, and also the, frankly, much greater efforts that are yet to come. So I suppose I could go on longer than would be warranted, but there, I think Arlington has a very long history of working towards inclusivity and working towards being a welcoming community. I know there was a piece, though it was in relation to this election that happened on Saturday. I think it painted a good history of this town's efforts. It was published, I think, in Your Arlington by Barbara Gooden. And I think anybody, anybody reading would benefit from, from a historical perspective, reading about the town's history of trying to build again inclusivity and welcomeness in the town. So that, that from a longer term history, I think that's important. More short term, I think it's important to mention that we just earlier this year kicked off a relationship with the National League of Cities and their Race Equity and Leadership Division to provide training to both the elected leadership of the town as well as leadership and supervisory staff in the part of the town. So I know this board participated in that training with the Race Equity and Leadership Division of the National League of Cities. And even though Mr. Diggins wasn't on the board, I believe he participated that, that day. That same training in longer form was provided to over 60 town staff from across all departments. And that's part of a long-term, supposed to be five-part training session that unfortunately has been disrupted by COVID-19. Can't bring 65 people together in the same room for such a training. So we're working now with the National League of Cities to figure out the best way to deliver that curriculum and that learning remotely. And ultimately what we, what we want to build out of that training is both education and information for people who work for the town to grow their understanding of the history of race in our country. But perhaps more importantly, to put into action and assessment and analysis of all our departments for instances of institutional racism and to cure them and remedy them. So we are, we're on the first steps of a journey in terms of inward looking analytical focus, again, on education, information, and then improvement for our town departments. So that will be something we'll be talking about more in upcoming weeks and months, but I think it's an important initiative for us to talk about. Another point directly to the resident who spoke under citizens' open forums point, Eight Can't Wait. It's eight police policies being recommended as part of Campaign Zero. I'm very happy to report that prior to Eight Can't Wait being released, the Arlington Police Department already had seven of those policies in place. The only policy they did not have in place was the duty to intervene. The chief immediately began working on putting that policy into place as well as strengthening some of the other seven, seven policies to be sure that they were as strong as what's being recommended by Campaign Zero. So once that duty to intervene is officially implemented, likely in the upcoming days, we'll be issuing a press release in that regard. There's more we'll be sharing. I don't want, again, I don't want this to be exhaustive. But there'll be, there's more we'll be sharing about the work of the police department in the upcoming days. So again, I think we, we acknowledge that we both started a lot of work and done a lot of work. But yet the road ahead is likely longer and harder than the road we've already traveled. So, and I know as we raised the Black Lives Matter banner today, standing shoulder to shoulder with Chief Flaherty and members of the police department, as well as members of the community, the select board, state representatives, members of the Human Rights Commission, Jill, our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. I, I know we have, we have a broad cross-section of people who are ready to roll up their sleeves and do the work that's necessary. So today, what we did is raise a Black Lives Matter banner on Town Hall. And as I said this morning, when we did that, I'll say the same here, that I don't feel as though we did that as any, for any reason to, you know, pat ourselves on the back or to congratulate ourselves or to celebrate some type of achievement, but rather to make a statement of solidarity, solidarity, excuse me, as well as an acknowledgement that we're committed to the work. So I, I see today as a positive step, not the end of a journey, but rather perhaps the start of a journey. And I look forward to hearing the board's thoughts on both the issue in general, as well as hearing about the proclamation that's been drafted by the Human Rights Commission.
As reference, we do a proclamation here, so I will read the proclamation, then I'll invite Sharon and Kristen and Jill to add any comments and then I will invite any comments from the board. So our proclamation is written states, whereas the town of Arlington acknowledges and deplores the history of systemic racism in the United States and in Arlington. And whereas the town of Arlington strongly condemns all racist acts of police violence and extends our deepest condolences to the families and friends of George Floyd and the other victims of racially biased police violence. And whereas the town of Arlington strongly condemns racist acts of oppression in all forms, including institutionalized racism, which has targeted black and brown communities for far too long. And whereas the town of Arlington has initiated and undertaken training programs aimed at strengthening cultural competencies and reducing racial, ethnic, and other bias within our municipal and school departments and has provided police officers with de-escalation training to minimize the risk of lethal interactions between law enforcement officers and civilians. And whereas the town of Arlington recognizes the importance of Juneteenth, June 19th, as dating back to 1865, when Union soldiers landed in Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended and that enslaved, enslaved were now free two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation became official. And whereas the town of Arlington respects the knowledge, experience, and traditions of all who live, work, study, or pray in our town or otherwise visit Arlington and will actively listen to the voices of our African-American community. And whereas the town of Arlington knows that we must all commit to being human rights champions. Fight racism and stand up as allies. And now therefore be it resolved that the town of Arlington encourages broad support of the Arlington Human Rights Commission hosted virtual vigil to be held on June 9th, 2020 at 7:00 PM to mourn deaths due to police violence and to affirm that black lives matter. And be it further resolved that the town of Arlington supports the work of our police department, our town government, and our schools to make them more diverse, equitable, and inclusive and commits to seeking further policy and administrative measures in support of this goal, including a series of four webinars to be hosted by the town, starting in June, aimed at deepening our community's understanding of systematic, systemic racism and the deep harm it causes. And be it further resolved that June 13th, 2020 shall be proclaimed as Black Lives Matter Day in Arlington. That a Black Lives Matter banner shall be prominently displayed on Town Hall during the month of June and until this date. And that all residents are encouraged to pay fitting observance thereof. All right. And with that, I will invite the co-chairs of the Human Rights Commission, if they'd like to add anything. Sharon?
Thank you. Thank you for taking this under consideration, especially since we gave it to you with a little bit of short notice. But as you all know, the, the, the events of the last week or two have sort of accelerated what we already knew we needed to do in this town and across the country and apparently across the world. And so we really appreciate you considering this proclamation and to continue our work together to work toward what we want, which is a much more inclusive place where we're really addressing the root issues of systemic racism.
Thank you. And Kristen?
Thank you. So I just want to echo really what Sharon said in that, first of all, we do greatly appreciate that you're taking this under advisement on such short notice. But I think the events, the time call for that kind of swift action and response. It certainly our hope that this proclamation would demonstrate the board's commitment to moving on these issues and by identifying these specific actions, giving the town of Arlington, the people of the town of Arlington some specific things to look forward to while recognizing this is a continuum, as the town manager said, that we'll have to be working on and that it will be a challenging path we need to take. But I think the proclamation would be an important recognition of that path. Thank you.
You. And I'd like to invite Jill Harvey, the town's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, if she'd like to add anything.
So I promoted Jill to panelist, but she's connected from a device without sound or video. So she's, she's chatted with me, but she's, she's, she's with us in spirit more than anything else.
Well, for anyone that was at the event today, she had wonderful things to say.
Absolutely.
We were so happy to have her on, on board. All right. With that, I'll turn to our board members for any comments. Ms. Mahan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Heard. And thank you to Ms. Grossman, Ms. Bauer, Sharon, and Kristen, as well as this morning, Jillian, Joe was there and Crystal, I can't remember her name, last name, it might be Sharp. She's on the Human Rights Commission. Also, yes, good, Sharon told me that that's right. And I just wanted to, now that the campaign's over, I felt a very small minority were taking this issue and injecting some really charged atmosphere that wasn't doing a service to it. So now that's all gone past. I do want to sort of echo the town manager, Mr. Chaplin's remarks that the town of Arlington started through the Human Rights Commission and through other department had started last year in August when some residents came in, some concerned residents that were speaking about. It was originally the Pedrini issue, but then it opened up the very uncomfortable but necessary discussion about systemic racism. And we learned about interpersonal, institutional, so on and so forth. And at that time, President Obama's foundation, which structured the Campaign Zero and came out, came out with the eight steps that can't wait, it was, it was and is geared towards cities and mayors. But because our Human Rights Commission, our town manager and others, and our then acting chief, now current chief, to me, a very progressive and certainly extremely sincere about this issue, said, just because it doesn't apply to us necessarily, and if we applied for funding, we wouldn't get it. They saw that great framework that was in place and committed to the eight steps that can't wait with Campaign Zero and just did it basically not on our own, but did it on our own in terms of ensuring that we did it. And I, I know it might have been election chatter. There was some critiquing that, you know, we had done seven and we didn't do eight. And what I explained to people is you can commit to something and you can say, oh yeah, we agree, we're going to be this kind of a community, we're going to be a tree community, we're going to be Campaign Zero. Yep, we're going to do the eight steps that can't wait and that, and just say it. But what the town of Arlington has done through the town manager, through the Human Rights Commission leaders and others, as well as my colleagues, is we really committed to that. And the reason why the last step duty to intervene came where it did, from my understanding, the rationale and what I researched on is we pretty much had addressed just about everything in our current policies with the police department for that. So we wanted to tackle the first seven that really needed some work, some brainstorming, you know, whether with the National League of Cities, with the real program. And now we are at that point. So I know I'm going a little long in the truth, but, and we all could, because this is something that's very important to us. It's something that brings a lot of emotion. And I just want to say, I learned a lesson this morning. And I hoped, I hope this new town meeting member also learned the same lesson. We were down there this morning, we didn't really advertise it for a big event because we're looking to our Human Rights Commissioners to sort of carry us through that. But, you know, there was a group of maybe 50, 60s of us, three, three people of color, our colleague, Mr. Diggins, Jillian and Crystal. And we had an appropriate ceremony and speeches. And then at the end, Crystal and Jillian were speaking with a newly elected town meeting member. And it just got into exactly what I've been reading and sort of trained on as a white woman who has privilege. Not the way to go. I think as we move forward, we're really going to need guidance from the Human Rights Commission, that when we start this process, especially politicians, but I think everybody, and especially if you're white and a woman, you need to listen. And you may hear something and want to say, no, 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 that's, you know, that's not what it is. You're perceiving it wrong. That's where we get off track from, from day one. There, there needs to be uncomfortable conversations that are had. If somebody's perception of person of color, my daughter-in-law is a person of color brown, Nepalese. And I've experienced through her some things that, you know, upsetting. But I think of what I would say to everyone, the lesson that I really learned, and I saw it this morning because it got into a yelling match, which not between me, between this new town meeting member. And I just don't want to go that way. And I wanted to take that moment. I don't like when people do cliches and say, oh, teach a And I just don't want to go that way. And I wanted to take that moment. I don't like when people do cliches and say, oh, teachable moment, but it was a teachable moment. That's everything that I've learned and my colleagues have learned. And the town manager and all the department heads, not just the police department. That when we start this process, first you have to accept there is racism. You have to accept because of, I have to accept, as Sean Godley said, because of the color of my skin, I do have privilege that I just got bonded into. And when we have these conversations, especially if you're a white man or woman. You're in politics, you're an employee, or you're just a resident in the street. I think we all need to check ourselves, commit to it. And for the first few meetings, and I'm going to ask human rights commissions to kind of frame it that way, really stress that. We need to listen to the men and women of color, whether they're citizens, whether they're employees, whether they're students. And don't start to clap back and retort. Because I think that's when the process, it just fails right there. So that was really an important message to me this morning when I saw that. You know. It's a particular town meeting member that I kind of but heads with anyways, but I said, now you're doing that exactly wrong. So. But anyways, I went long in the tooth. It's something myself and my colleagues are very passionate about. And I am so happy that. The members of the Human Rights Commission are really the leaders on this. And you're probably happy that I'm not because imagine how long the meetings would go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Yeah, you know, I I I thought it was a good event this morning too. And and I was happy with the show to turn out. I mean. For understandable reasons, they wanted to keep it small. You know, one of my favorite phrases that came out. And maybe been around for a while, but I became aware of it in the maybe late eighties, early nineties was think locally, act globally. Or maybe it was act be, I think I got it reversed. Be so it's um, think. Globally, act locally. And and in the same context, I want to say, you know, think generally and act specifically. And so right now the focus is on race as as well, it should be. And 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 I, it's good to see. That focus and attempts to work on that issue, especially in respect to police brutality, but also keep in mind. That there are other injustices out there, structural sexism. And and my big one is is the problems that low people with low income. Face and 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 one person asked me, what you think would be something that could help us be moved. Progress. And I said, you know, two things, being um, make sure that everyone has access to a good education. That's long run. And in the short run, increase minimum wage, you know, make it be something that is livable. And that does require the people of privilege. Regardless of their race, being because usually that privilege is based on income. And it requires us to be, get people to realize that. If you raise up the prosperity of everyone. Everyone will benefit. And so if you grow to pie, you may have a small percentage of the pie. But the pie will be bigger and you will benefit too. So just get people to understand that it's in their best interest to really make it. Possible for everyone alive to thrive. And that's not only in the U S. And so we we focus as we need to, but keep in mind that the there are. Universal general problems that we can perhaps use this moment to leverage and and work on solving. Those those underlying bigger issues too. So that's my take on things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carl.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank, thank Ms. Grossman, Ms. Bauer for bringing this forward. And Ms. Harvey, I know that Ms. Harvey worked. A lot to prepare the the resolution and to help with the logistics around. This morning's celebration and to provide ongoing support to the Human Rights Commission and. The the prior commission, just the commission of disabilities and such. This is something that has been long overdue. So very happy to have that support. I spoke a bit on this. Last week, but I just want to relate. Some thoughts from yesterday. So yesterday I walked down to, or I went down to St. John's Episcopal Church. And it's not the St. John's Episcopal Church. It's been all over the news. It was the one right over on Pleasant Street. And I didn't go down there to wave a Bible. I. I went down there to to meet my my pastor and probably a dozen of our. parishioners there so that we could join in on the solidarity funeral procession that had been organized. By Boston area clergy and was taking place in Mass Ave. I would say that there must have been almost a thousand people there. I I would say it was probably the lot. We've had a lot of large demonstrations last couple of weeks, but I think that this was one of the largest such. Vigils that I've seen since two thousand and one when. We had incidents of hate literature being dropped on the doorsteps of the Lost Boys here in in Arlington. And it just happened to coincide with nine eleven at that time as well. That this was just about the the largest. I don't know if any of you noticed that we had, we had an election on Saturday. And, you know, a lot of these issues were discussed during during that time, but this is what was heartening. Is it in that solemn procession yesterday through Arlington Center? I saw so many faces of people who had worked for different candidates have been on either side of different electoral. Contest over the past months, but we're all unified a purpose, I think, in in. In a grief and and mourning. The organizers had asked, you know, it was billed as primarily a remembrance of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery. But participants were asked to bring. Signs with either name of one of those victims of of. Race-based police violence or someone else who had died of racist violence. And. The sign that I carried was Trey Pringle. And so I got to give you a little background, and I'm sorry, I'm going on a little a bit too, but I think we've all been hit hard with this. So I was born on October twenty second nineteen sixty-five. In Beaufort County, South Carolina. It was just two and a half months after the Voting Rights Act was adopted. My father was stationed at Paris Island. Twenty-eight years and one week to the day, October twenty ninth. Nineteen ninety-three Trey Pringle was born in Beaufort County, South Carolina. It was, he grew to be a young. Black man. Who had some mental impairments and challenges and one night. Beaufort County Sheriff's Department was called to his home. His mother was asking for help, was asking for hospitalization. But by the end of the night. He'd been kicked. He'd been tased five times. He'd been grabbed in a in a chokehold, actually by one of the county firefighters who wasn't authorized or trained. And three days later, he was dead at the age of twenty-four. So I. I carried that name because I think. I was born in that county. Trey Pringle was born in that county. I received all the privileges of my race, of education, of family. A profession of this supportive community. Trey Pringle received a grave, an early grave. And and there are so many stories like his. One of the eerie counterpoints yesterday. It wasn't intentional, but it's an eerie counterpoint. Is that the solidarity procession was happening right at the tail end of the Arlington High School graduation caravan. And so as residents were quietly walking around Arlington Center on the on the sidewalks. Students were going by and they're celebrating, they're happy as they should be. They have their whole lives ahead of them and their names were on their cars. They have their whole lives ahead of them. And everyone on the sidewalk was. Carrying the names of those who lost their lives to race-based violence. And so the counterpoint was just stark. And the consciousness raising that we we have to think about what systemic racism means or what privilege means. To to all of us. We have some long conversations. We've had long conversations with our board and with our administrators. I'm I'm glad to see. That 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 the the chief has embraced the the eight. Practices that can't wait. Just as I was happy to see that she was inspired to 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 draw from President Obama's. Report on on twenty-first century policing that that he and. Had had commissioned and put a lot of work into. We're not done with our conversations. I I think that. You know. I I knew, I've known all along we're not done, but 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 the events and the conversations that we've seen nationally have only just sharpened my my awareness of that. So thank you for this. I I am glad that we are. Getting out out front. And I look forward, as you said, Mr. Manager, to the hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize the amount of time.
Thank you. Mr. Decourcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, my explanation for the acknowledgement that the town manager made today. That that we do have a lot of work to do, but we were there today as a statement of solidarity, not to congratulate ourselves. But to continue working and and we have a lot of work ahead. We have a lot of uncomfortable discussions ahead, but we need to move ahead. And this, I think, has become apparent. Throughout our country that this is a national issue. It's a local issue and it's an issue as to how we conduct our daily lives. And. I go back just to timing fifty-seven years ago, this Thursday, President Kennedy addressed the nation. On the needs for civil rights reform. Here we are fifty-seven years later and we're still struggling. With systemic racism, we're struggling with other issues. But I have to say, based on what we've seen in the last week. This time it really feels like there is an opportunity for change across the country and in our community. And it's going to require a lot of hard work. It's going to require a lot of difficult discussions and and people are going to be uncomfortable, but that's that's part of the the process of moving forward. So. I certainly support that the proclamation and. That the resolution that July thirteenth will be Black Lives Matters Matters Day. And I hope between now, even the short period of time. We have more to port as far as what we're doing locally and what we're what we're doing in in the Commonwealth. And and what's happening around the country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I was happy to participate in the event this morning. We had a good turnout. For those that didn't know about the event, and of course, because of the ongoing pandemic, we had to keep it small. But, you know, when the town manager had brought this issue up to us last, late last week. Initially, I like, I'm sure all my colleagues immediately supported. Raising the banner, the Black Lives Banner on Town Hall. And I was able over the weekend to speak with a number of residents as well as. Number of police officers about it. And everyone I spoken to spoke to, including the police officers, supported. What we were doing today. And it was great today to be out there shoulder to shoulder with our Arlington Police Department. To declare that what happened in Minnesota was horrific, a horrific murder. To acknowledge that George Floyd's death is not the only death that has happened. As a result of acts of racial violence and to acknowledge that. You know, we as a town have to identify. Systemic racism both abroad, both nationally, but we have to continue to identify racism locally. And continue to work on this together with our town staff, our board and our residents. And we started this discussion about a year and a half ago. And we've made progress, but there's still a lot of work to do. And we went there today to declare that we understand that there there's work to do, that we're. Up for the challenge and we're going to continue to engage our residents in order to to help fight systemic racism locally and internationally. So and I want to thank the town manager for putting that event together and and. Getting the banner on short notice. With that, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation and endorse the placement of Black Lives Manor on Town Hall? Mr. Diggins has his hand raised?
Yeah, we, and I will go ahead and let Joe make the the motion, you know, but but one of the thing I wanted to add to is that. If we would have made a lot more progress, we had, we had different administrations. On the federal level at various points in time. And a lot of that is because people who have our values do not vote. And and that's of all races, you know. And and so I know. We don't generally add things to proclamations, but in future proclamations, I'd like to see us make a resolve to get people to the polls. I know there are lots of forces that are trying to suppress the vote, but we have the power to to fight that suppression. And make it clear to folks, I mean, that as important as it is for you to be on the streets protesting, it is even more important that you get to the polls. And vote because that is the way it works in a democracy. And 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 so we just got to hammer that home. So. That's my last piece on this. Thank you.
And so I have a motion by Mr. Carl. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Decourcy. Is there any further discussion or comment? On a motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Decourcy, attorney high. Ms. Mahan. Diane, you have to unmute yourself.
I finally learned how to shut me up and I don't know how to turn me back on. Yes.
Mr. Decourcy.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Kuro.
Yes.
Mr. Heard. Yes. Janitor's vote. Thank you all. Thank you to Kristen, Sharon and Jill for joining us. Alright, so the next item on our agenda, item number nine for discussion approval. Charlie Proctor Bike Memorial at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue in Appleton Street. This, of course, have received a number of correspondence in in response to the horrific tragedy that happened in early May. Where a bicyclist was killed on Mass Ave when he was struck by a motorist. I will turn to the town manager for a discussion of this issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do see several. Members of the family in attendance. Should I invite them in to the discussion as well? Sure. Let me do that. Okay, I believe. I believe that's everybody. If I if I have missed somebody, please, please let me know and I'll invite them in to speak as well. So I I'll be very brief. I think the board knows that this. This request came in just after the agenda deadline last meeting. So was we were committed to bring this memorial request back to this meeting. I think we should hear from Mr. Proctor's family about what they're envisioning, but I would. I would envision the board considering favorable action on their request tonight. Subject to the family working with myself and other appropriate town officials in regards to placement of the memorial. But. With that, Mr. Chair, if you want to hear from the family, I think that would be appropriate. Sure, absolutely. And I'd just like to say on behalf of myself and all of our board members of the town. Our deepest condolences for your. our deepest condolences for your loss in this terrible tragedy. There's been an outpouring of support and love that we've received for your son, your brother, your boyfriend. And, you know, we really, he, he was clearly an amazing human being who was loved and had so many family and friends. So I'll invite anyone that wants to add to our discussion about the memorial to do so.
Hi, members of the board. My name is Tom Proctor, Charlie's brother. I just wanted to clarify exactly what, what we, we were thinking about. Memorial is just, it's, it's a bicycle painted white, but you've locked to a street sign, have some signage about Charlie and mention where he died there. And we've already have the, the bike prepared, so it'd really be, I guess, a, a conversation with you, Adam, about where exactly we, we'd want to lock it. Know that there's a few parking signs right, right on Mass Ave there. And, I mean, yeah, any, we, we want to hear a recommendation from you about that, but I think that's, that's really what we're waiting for from you.
Sure. And what we will do today is we'll endorse the placement of the memorial and then we'll work out. Adam can work out with the DPW that the, a safe place to put it and how to, to best handle it. With that, I will go to the board members for any comments that you may have. Mr. Diggins?
Oh, I, I fully support this, man. When, when you see them, you know, it, it, um, you, you feel it, you know, you, and, and even if you initially don't even know what it's about, it's like, that's odd. You know, it just kind of makes you uh, think um, twice, you know, even more deeply about cycling. And once you really know what it's all about, uh, it really um, makes a big impact. So, so I definitely support this.
All right. Ms. Mahan? You're still muted.
I bet I sound better when you can't hear me. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I did want to through you ask if, um, first thing, Tom, um, for once again, joining us at an extremely difficult time. I don't know how you're keeping yourself together and your family. I know you're probably not eating much. I hope you're drinking lots of water, taking care of yourself and others. And, and thank you for this. And I have, along with my colleagues, have had the opportunity to correspond with, I believe Charlie's aunt is joining us. Is that Judith there? And his partner, Allison? Um, I don't know if
That's my, my mother, and she's sitting next to me just for the sake of having more
Who's mom? Hi, Mom. I'm so sorry. And I know you're trying to keep, keep everyone together and taking care of everyone but yourself, but same, same thing for you. Um, I'm, you, the Proctor family and Allison have been in all our thoughts and prayers and there's no words appropriate. But I think of you daily and I'm just impressed by caring about Charlie from many, many people who have written in um, and added their own personal attestations about his life and his future and his dreams and goals. But I don't know if um, either Judith or Allison, did you want to say anything? No from Allison? No from Judith? Okay, thank, well, thank you so much, and I'll leave it at that. And I'm a hundred percent behind this and all the right people who should be involved are, and I look forward to voting on something in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decorsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I also want to express my condolences to the, the family and to, to Allison. I'm sorry that we had to bring you back here tonight again. You, you were with us last week, but because of the um, uh, that, that the rules that we have on the agenda, so I think I'm, I'm sorry for that. I'm very sorry for your loss. And I, I support this recommendation and, and uh, you know, look to the town manager and, and his staff to work with you to to, to find an appropriate location for the memorial.
Mr. Carl? Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to just offer my heartfelt condolences to you. I'm happy to support the memorial for um, in Charlie's memory, you know. It's only every, you know, one or two years that we, that something strikes a chord with folks. We have such an outpouring and that this is one of those um, times where we've had just such an outpouring of folks who were touched by Charlie's loss, want to memorialize him, and also asked us to, to, to help make um improvements at that location so that this, this doesn't happen to someone else. So I, I'm happy to support the memorialization. I know we're going to talk about some of the other issues um, later on the agenda. So um, thank you for, for coming and for, for, for keeping his memory alive and then we'll uh, I know that the manager will work with you um, every way he can. Thank you.
And with that, I will take a motion to endorse the placement of the memorial with, subject to the town manager's discussions with DPW regarding place, placement and safety. With a mo- motion for approval by Ms. Mahan. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Diggins. Are there any further comments? On a motion by Ms. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins, Attorney Heim?
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you for participating tonight. I know we'll be in touch with uh, future arrangements for the memorial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, the next item on the agenda related to the memorial is for discussion approval, creation of a design review committee at Massachusetts Ave in Appleton Street. And I will look to the town manager for this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Uh, so in relation to this intersection, uh, where we just spoke about the memorial, there's already been some very uh, good work done by Aback in terms of making short-term recommendations uh, as well as uh, quite clearly uh, interest in making more long-term um, significant uh, improvements to that intersection. So in speaking with the chairman of the Transportation Advisory Committee, we both agreed the uh, quickest, most effective way to focus on this was to set up a special design review committee to focus on just this intersection. Again, to first work on the short term, uh, short-term recommendations while also getting, uh, getting to work on looking at long-term recommendations for So what I have before the board tonight uh, is a request to establish this design review committee. We're asking for a representative from TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee, a representative from Aback, the Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, uh, a representative from uh, the Arlington Police Department, a representative from the Planning Department, who would be the senior transportation planner, a representative from the Engineering Division, a representative of the local businesses in the area, a representative of State Athanasius Paris, and then three residents. I think I got everybody there. Uh, and what we would do is um, if approved, we would quickly post uh, four residents to serve. And then once we had three residents screened uh, and selected, and I would ask the board's allowance for uh, me and the senior transportation planner to screen those residents and, and seat them on this committee so that we can get it running. Um, we would start meeting right away and get to work.
Thank you. So with that, I'll take comment from the board. Uh, Mr. Diggins?
Oh, I, I full- I fully support this, and, and I'm, I'm really pleased to see how um, active East Orange and Little Streets is on this matter too, because even though it's on another part, another part of town, I mean uh, there are a lot of cyclists, part of, that belong to ELSD and, and, and yeah, I mean, it's East Orange and Little Streets. It's a artificial um, demarcation. We care about what's going on in all the town and so so um, yeah, definitely support this whole committee. Thank you.
You, Mr. Carl?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to move approval of the recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval by Mr. Carl. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think that was Lynn.
Or Steve.
Second by Mr. Diggins. All right, uh, Mr. Decorsi, do you have any comments to add?
Yeah, no, thank you. And I appreciate the, the recommendation to create a special committee for this and, and uh, and also for the um, the thoughtfulness and the correspondence that we received, both to short-term and long-term solutions at that intersection.
And Ms. Mahan?
I'm definitely behind this and I, I'm recalling one of the pieces of uh, correspondence that we received, and I can't remember who, who it was from that said uh, this was exactly the type of thing that Charlie um, was in his real house that, that he, he could fix and find a solution for. So I look forward to, um, as Mr. Decorsi said, continuing on with both short and long-term solutions. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I think, I believe that was his aunt. Again, I think this is the, the right step in the, in the right direction, and we have a number of recommendations so the committee can hit the ground running. So I will support this. And so on
Mr. Chairman, uh, there, there is somebody with their hand raised. They raised it right at the start of this agenda, Adam. I, it's up to you. Uh, I know this isn't a public hearing.
Sure, if it's just one person more.
Okay. Name is Phyllis.
Okay.
Okay, it should be unmuted, Phyllis. I don't know. Okay, it looks like you're unmuted, Phyllis.
Hi, Phyllis, can you hear us?
They appear to be, and they appear to be, and she appears to be unmuted, so.
One more time, Phyllis? Okay, well, uh, we'll move on to the vote. All right, so we
Tom has just uh, via the chat, informed me that Phyllis is Charlie's aunt.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, Phyllis, can you hear us?
Says she may have trouble with the mute.
She's, she's now unmuted. Okay, I, I
Okay.
Okay.
And I believe we did have correspondence. So, and Phyllis, you could certainly, with any further comments, reach out to the board and uh, we'll get back to you right away with your recommendations. All right, so on a motion for approval of the creation of the Design Review Committee at Massachusetts Ave in Appleton Street, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Carl, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Attorney Heim? I, you're muted, Attorney Heim.
Sorry about that. Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. All right. So, before we get into June meetings, we will look back around to the agenda number, item number eight, uh, or six rather, on Traffic Rules in Order for approval on the Preservation Loan Fund Loan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the long and short of it is, uh, the Arlington Preservation Fund, as the board may recall, is a fund that was created by operation of a community development block grant to provide low-interest loans for folks with properties that are essentially historically significant in nature. The loan that's sort of administered through the fund has to be approved, or technically speaking, not rejected by the select board. So I don't have any details about this specific loan, but um, in order for the loan to be processed, it has to be presented before the board. I have no reason to think that there's anything inappropriate about this loan, uh, but it has to be presented to the board, and I would take a motion to approve as what would they, what they would need to uh, continue processing it. And just for the uh, public's information, one of the things that happens when these loans are granted is usually there's some sort of preservation restriction that's placed um, on a property for an extended period of time. So it's a way of trying to help homeowners and also maintaining the historic character of Arlington's buildings.
With that, I will look to the board for a motion or discussion.
Oh, moved. Move approval.
Mr. Carl, do I have a second?
Second. Excuse me.
And by Ms. Mahan. Mr. Carl, do you have any com- comments or anything to add?
No.
Ms. Mahan?
No, thank you.
Mr. Decorsi?
No comments.
And Mr. Diggins?
I'm all set.
All right, with that, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Carl, seconded by Ms. Mahan. Attorney Heim?
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Decorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, so now we go back to item number eleven for discussion, June to August Select Board Meetings.
Well, um, Mr. Chair, if I could. Where we have town meeting on June fifteenth. So procedurally, we have to have a very short meeting before that. And in light of that, I think that's pretty much a given, but I, I would ask for, and I had a conversation with Mr. Hurd this morning, in anticipation of him being our chair, um, to have on the June eighth agenda, um, to stop the process that we need to start to uh, get the voting machines, the new equipment that we so desperately need. First step is, the select board needs to take a vote to indicate that, you know, they're going to do that and follow the process, which then kicks in a ninety-day um, requirement of things that need to happen. And the way I understand, uh, the way the law is written right now, um, we could not use those machines for ninety days, which would put us beyond the September primary. Um, our original hope was that um, it would work for a soft opening with the local election. That didn't happen. There's nothing we can do about that. But I did, um, so I definitely would like, and I, I think the chair was a, agreeable to having that one particular piece of business on, for town meeting.
True.
And then um, I did mention to um, Representative Sean Gobley, uh, as well as Clarissa Rowe to um, contact Senator Friedman. And I know Representative Gobley um, had a co- conversation with Secretary Galvin this morning. He briefed him on um, the situation here in Arlington, because what, what I was asking, what I'm asking our legislative delegation and/or if Attorney Heim has um, any suggestion, if there is any way, I understand this is ninety-day um, timeframe and clock technically doesn't stop running until June fifteenth next week, when we take that vote, which I anticipate we will, it will be unanimous. If there's any way in light of COVID nineteen, uh, in light of um, uh, the town clerk and new election and new staff, but more importantly, in light of the fact that it is going to be a presidential primary and some pieces of equipment cannot be um, fixed, especially precinct four. I mean, that poor thing, that's all she wrote. It's not coming back. And in light of the fact that we want to make sure voters are comfortable and safe in voting, we also want to make sure they're comfortable that um, the technology, the equipment is there. So if there's any way we can get a variance or a waiver to um, not be required to hold out to that ninety-day commitment, but do everything we need to do within those ninety days and use them for September. Otherwise, one of the things I've asked the delegation to relay, and Sean said he did, is that, you know, we could possibly have multiple precincts that have to be uh, subjected to a hand count. subjected to a hand count, which I'd like to avoid that. So I don't know if through you, Mr. Chair, or Attorney Heim, or anyone else can make a suggestion about how we get over that. Thank you.
Sure, and Attorney Heim?
So obviously, we're discussing the setting the meetings. But, but, but I think that Ms. Mahan raises a point in terms of the the timeframe that we need to have these discussions. So I also would like to note that to the extent that there is a potential for a recount, it would be helpful for the board to appoint an additional registrar, because there's currently a vacancy. So if that could be scheduled for, you know, as soon as possible, I think that that would be something that would be advisable. And just to Ms. Mahan's point, because it's so important, I do feel comfortable saying that I will do everything I can to urge some kind of waiver and, you know, whatever that needs to be done with the Secretary of State's office to try to make sure that we can utilize the newer equipment as soon as possible.
Sure. And we'll put this on the meet, on for, as a meeting agenda next week so we can all have a discussion about this and vote and talk about the next steps.
The Chair?
Sure.
Yeah, just a question on this. So I know that the moderator had asked people to come to Pierce Field at 6 o'clock to get through all of the screenings and picking up of clickers and such. Is your thinking that we would do an earlier virtual meeting and then recess to come back into session at town meeting? So we'd start as virtual and then go there? Or was, okay. So you're thinking like 5 o'clock or 4:30 or something like that?
Yep, whatever time is, it'll be, even with times, we, yeah, it will be a short agenda. So I think 5 o'clock. Does 5 o'clock next Monday work for everyone to meet virtually?
Yeah, I mean, I would probably just be there on my phone, you know, so that it wouldn't take much time to get to Pierce Field, because I was going to ask, you know, I was asking the same thing about what time we want to start, especially if we might in the family, a bit of a discussion. So yeah, I'm fine with that. 5 o'clock, 4:30.
Okay, we'll set it for 5 o'clock. I think that will give us enough time to have our meeting and get over to the field, if that works.
It's along those lines. I mean, is there a place where maybe I could, I could be at Pierce Field and have a conversation and virtually, with me?
So you can do it wherever you can find a Wi-Fi signal or whatever device you're on.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Fine, fine, okay.
Sure.
Sure, thank you.
All right, so we have June 15th.
And then, Mr. Chair, through you, do we want to schedule a June 29th meeting after the 15th? But then, if for some reason, I'd leave it up to you, Mr. Chair, if there's something that we stopped the process on June 15th and if things work out, we need to meet the 22nd, I'd leave it to you to through the select board office, all the board members. But could I also suggest, just for the regular town business, we have a meeting on June 29th virtually at 7:15, and I don't know if that works for everyone else.
And by a head nod, June 29th at 7:15? June 29th, 7:15.
Mr. Chair, may I add something?
Yep.
So one other thing to keep in mind is that our focus has been rightly on the town election and town meeting. One thing that does need to get a little bit more juice behind it is the, from my office perspective, is the recent marijuana host, community host agreement applications. And we will need to have a meeting where we essentially allow for those presentations, but we may need to build out some additional time to allow the preliminary review team in some departments to review these things. So I'd be happy to come back at the next board meeting and try to present some sort of timeline on that. But I think I could be wrong, Ms. Mahan, but I thought the 29th was the date that we had set as an anticipated date for the host community agreement presentation. So we may or may not want to keep that date for that.
Okay.
How about I leave it with the chair that, you know, communicate with Attorney Heim tomorrow if, and then so maybe tentatively, we can find out from the select board office if we do need another night, Monday night meeting to do the business of the town for things that are sensitive, whether it's common picture or something else, we may have to do 22nd and 29th. But I leave that to the chair. And the only other thing I would say is I know the select board office normally when we schedule our meetings, likes us to do it, you know, two, three, four months out. But I think in light of, we're all sort of, I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. I was thinking maybe, I don't know many people that are going away on vacation, but I want to know what the chair wants to do with my colleagues, if we want to just stop at June meetings and then at our next meeting, do July and August, which is one meeting and one meeting, or if you want to take care of that tonight. It doesn't matter to me either way.
Yeah, I can take comments from the board. I think the one meeting that we have to look to in July is our goal-setting meeting, correct? So we'll have to look to that as well. Does anyone on the board have preference as to how far we schedule our meetings?
I'm happy to schedule out the July and August, just understanding that August may be a little bit in the balance for me.
Sure. Yeah, I think we should go ahead and put meetings on for July and August with the understanding that I can talk to Attorney Heim tomorrow about the community host agreements to see how much time we need, whether or not June 29th is a feasible date to hear those items. And then if needed, we can, we can add a meeting in between, if that works. All right, so if we're in, so we have the 15th, the 29th, we go into July with the 13th and 27th work for the board for July meetings?
We only meet once in July and once in August.
Plus goal-setting.
I saw the faces of your four colleagues, Mr. Hurd, when you said that.
I was fine with it.
Why we elect this guy chair?
I was fine with it. I was totally fine with it, you know?
Why don't I see him on the screen anymore? Well, there he is. Okay, sorry. Now who are we missing?
Let me see.
Oh, Attorney Heim.
So for July, would the 13th work?
I think that's good.
Yep. Oh, sorry.
Yes.
I
Does that not work for you?
I hear footsteps. Yeah, we actually have a commitment on the 13th. Would the 20th work?
Yes.
Yep.
Fine.
All right, so the 20th for our July meeting and then are we, so I know we had talked about doing a goal-setting meeting in conjunction with the ARB way back. Are we still going to have, to tell me, are we still going to have a goal-setting meeting at the end of July?
So, you know, I have to admit, I haven't thought through how we would do that remotely.
Sure.
So what, how about me and you walk with the Chair of the ARB and Jenny, right? And figure out a strategy and then get a date in the books.
Okay, so we'll hold off on scheduling the goal-setting meeting.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And then I will look to August for one meeting. And how would August 10th work?
That's good.
Presently fine.
Fine with me.
Could be, could be a problem, but presently fine. I don't know. My daughter's going back to college, so.
All right.
So I hate for you to schedule around me, but I think that's the week I'm going to try to plan to be away for at least some of the week.
All right.
Sorry.
It's fine. Maybe closer to, maybe the following week, because I'd be a little closer to Labor Day, because we probably wouldn't be back until the Monday after Labor Day.
Right, right.
So it'd be a little more spaced out. More time for things to happen.
Sorry, are we now looking at the 17th? And we don't have to meet in the summer on a Monday night. We want to switch it to a Thursday or something.
Right.
But.
Would August 17th work?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, so we'll schedule for August 17th. We have June 15th, June 29th. Did not read on the July date. July 20th and August 17th, with the understanding that if we need to add meetings in between, we'll do so.
Can I ask a question regarding the discussion at the 15th on the meeting next week and around voting machines? I don't want to go out of line if it's violating open meeting laws. I just want a clarification.
I would ask it, the best way to deal with it would be to direct it to Town Council in the next week and then we'll discuss it at length next Monday.
Sure, thank you.
All right, and I don't believe we need a motion for our item. So we have correspondence received. We have a number of correspondence that we received in relation to the fatal bike crash at the intersection of Mass Ave in Appleton Street. And we had a correspondence about the shared street, shared street pilot program in the final, the fatal bicycle crash from Brian Restucha. Do I have a motion to receive?
Move receipt.
Second?
Second, but I would also ask that we refer all of this to the new working group that we just set up.
Yep. For these two items, to the Mass Ave, the Design Review Committee for Massachusetts Avenue and Appleton Street. And we have a motion for, to receive from Mr. Carl, seconded by Ms. Mahan.
Can I just be clear? I think Ms. Mahan made the motion and, or was it Mr. Kuro?
Ms. Mahan made the motion. I don't know if she's amenable to the referral I suggested.
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. A motion by Ms. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carl.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. And so we do not have new business posted. We do have executive session. So with that, I'll take a motion.
To adjourn? Is that, Mr. Hurd, or Attorney Heim through Mr. Hurd?
Yes, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
So we have a motion to adjourn from Ms. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carl, Attorney Heim?
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes. And thank you all for your patience.